Hello. We would normally be having a workshop, but I think we're heading into executive session. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Executive session regarding consultation with the city attorney. Requested action to enter into an executive session pursuant to main revised statutes annotated, Title I, Section 405.6E, to discuss a legal matter with the city attorney.
Yep. Counselor Lashawal, followed by Counselor Jolinas. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word One?
Yes.
Word Two? I'm sorry. Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
We will be back at seven. Thank you.[163.88]
Good evening, welcome to Lewiston City Council. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and we would be honored, Mr. Tim Galant, if you could lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Galant. We're going to start things off with Lewiston Leads. It's a new program that we have, starting, what, just this month? And where city councilors and myself recognize deserving outstanding citizens who have contributed to the city of Lewiston. And I think we're going to start off with you, Councilor LaChapelle?
Yes.
And, yes, I think, Madam Clerk has the mic for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. St. Laurent, would you come to the front, please? I believe a wonderful example of a person to receive the Lewiston Leads Award is Gary St. Laurent from St. Laurent &amp; Sons. The company was founded in 1970 on Bartlett Street. In 1985, Gary joined his father in his family's business. In 2005, Gary purchased the business. Since that time, the company has grown from three employees to over ninety employees today. They also have moved the operation from Bartlett Street to Highland Spring Road, staying in Lewiston. Gary felt it important to keep the company in Lewiston. Through Gary's leadership, his company is known in Central Maine as an innovative, cost-saving provider for commercial construction while maintaining their reputation of outstanding personal service for residential projects. Former Lewiston Public Works Director David Jones was quoted as saying, "I was happy to see St. Laurent &amp; Sons win a bid, as I knew the job would get done and done right." Gary's leadership and compassion for his employees has made this company what it is today. His motto is, "It's not his job to take care of customers, it's his job to take great care of his employees and his employees in turn will take great care of his customers." Not only has Gary worked, excuse me, not only does he work hard, Gary has also stayed involved within the city of Lewiston. These are just a few of the commissions and boards that he has been on. Lewiston Development Corporation for eight years, Lewiston Public Works Advisory Committee for three years, member of the Maine Aggregate Association, Lewiston Public Works Director Hiring Committee, Vice President/Coach of the Gladiators Youth Hockey Organization for six years, hosted multiple exchange students from Spain, his business donates every year to a variety of local area youth sports. During all of this, Gary has been married to his beautiful wife Lisa for over thirty-three years. They have three children, Jill, Michaela, and Nathan. One son-in-law and one great, excuse me, not great, one grandson, so I didn't want to put you to it. All in all, Gary's just a great guy and the company is just a really good company and we're proud to have people like Gary leading Lewiston. So with that, I present you the ceremonial coin, sir.
Right. And we'll get one picture coming up.
And now I think we have Councilor Jalinas.
As part of the Lewiston Leads Program, it is my pleasure and my honor this evening to recognize former Senior Chief Petty Officer of the U.S. Navy Timothy Galant. As resident of Ward Seven, Tim has done much for the city of Lewiston and surrounding areas. Tim is a valuable asset to the Planning Board, serving now in his second term. In addition to this capacity, I have had the privilege of working alongside him on the Rally for Recovery Committee. He was instrumental in helping us organize this past weekend's event, the Rally for Recovery. He went above and beyond, silently ensuring that many details had been tended to. His work with those who battle with substance use disorder can also be found in the work he does with barriers to bridges, as he works and supports individuals who are pursuing recovery. I'm recognizing Tim this evening with a challenge coin because I've watched him work tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure that our most vulnerable are cared for. I describe his service as humble and sometimes unacknowledged because he does it in a way that doesn't scream attention. Tim volunteers and he heads up a food pantry, as well as a weekly community meal at the Pathway Vineyard Church, serving so many. Tim, the city of Lewiston and our community is a better place because of you. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations to both Gary St. Laurent and Tim Galant. Thank you very much for serving our city. And now, it is my pleasure, you know, all we need is a basketball. It's my pleasure to recognize the Bates Women's Basketball Team. Do we have the coach here, Coach Montgomery? And I understand that the team captain is Megan Graff?
Yes.
Wait, we have two team captains? Oh, okay, I guess if the coach and the two team captains can just join me over here. As they're getting up here. So they won a championship this year, but this past school year, but we weren't, because everyone ran off to summer, weren't able to get everyone, but now that they're all back for fall. And I'm sorry, your name?
I'm Megan.
You're Megan?
Yes.
I'm Bree.
Bree? And then Coach, Coach Allison Montgomery. So I have a proclamation here that I will read. Recognizing Bates College first-ever women's basketball NSCAC Tournament Championship. The Bobcats, Bates College Women's Basketball Team, whereas, there we go, held an eighteen-eight record during their 2021 and to 2022 season and secured the program's first-ever New England Small College Athletic Association Conference, NSCAC, Tournament Championship, and whereas- And whereas, the team was guided by Allison Montgomery, Women's Basketball Coaches Association and National Collegiate Athletic Association Division III National Coach of the Year finalist. And whereas, the squad not only advanced to the NCAA Division III Championship Tournament for the first time since 2005-2006, but also earned a thrilling first-round victory in overtime against Roger Williams University. What was the score?
We ended up winning by three.
Oh, well, that's awesome.
Sixty-five.
You guys are amazing. And whereas, Coach Montgomery led the Bobcats to a .692 winning percentage, their best since 2004-2005. And whereas, team captain Megan Graff was named the NSCAC Player of the Year and a D3Hoops and a D3Hoops.com Second Team All-American after previously averaging sixteen-point-two points per game. And whereas, this proclamation recognizes the following 2022-2023 roster players, I'm just going to say your first names, Danielle, Elsa, Ava, Sophie, Cecilia, Caroline, Alexandra, Davina, Allison, Morgan, Delaney, Jenna, Kayla, Brianna, and Megan. And whereas, appreciation is also extended to head coach Allison Montgomery and assistant coach Jackie Luckhart for their guidance and expertise. And whereas, the city of Lewiston will be cheering the team on during their 2022-2023 season, commencing November 12th with a 4:00 PM home game versus Tufts University. And whereas, the Bobcats have not only done themselves and the college proud, but Lewiston is also very proud to be the team's home city. Now therefore, I, Carl Elchelene, the mayor of the city of Lewiston, do hereby officially recognize the Bates College Bobcats Women's Basketball Team for their first New England Small College Athletic Association Conference Tournament Championship and applaud their hard work and dedication. I'll give this to you, and if I can get all the players to come up to the front of the city council stand, and we're all going to get a quick photo.
No kidding?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, next time I think, I'm going to need a step stool. That's awesome. We have to ask about players.
Yeah, oh, okay.
They were taller than us.
Madam Clerk, we are ready to begin.
Yes, sir, thank you. All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Council of Ward Three, and we'll also note for the record that Councilor McCarthy has an excused absence this evening.
May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Councilor Clement, seconded by Councilor Pease.
I think we have one question.
So we are just accepting the August 16th minute tonight?
Yes, correct, yes, thank you.
Any other, Madam Clerk, please call the vote?
Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
We are now up to public comment. So any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston city government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record and please indicate if you are a Lewiston resident. Because this is, because this is the business meeting of the city council, all questions should be directed to the mayor, who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the city council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the city administration office. And do we have any public comment? Please step forward.
Hi, it's me again. I'm Rachel, I live in Lewiston, Ward Seven. I just want to start by saying hello, city council members, citizens of Lewiston, and Mr. Mayor. For those who know where Ward Seven is, it's probably no secret where I'm about to go. In March of 2020, I moved into a three-bedroom apartment on River Street in Lewiston. Who would have known that a couple of months later someone would be shot and killed in my doorway on Halloween night? Who would have known that a short year later our building would sell and our rent would double? Who would have known three months after our rent doubled, they'd be trying to raise it by $400 again? We signed a lease when we moved in and we asked all the questions, all the questions you ask, will this lease renew? What happens if you sell the building? New owner swore, up and down, she was going to uphold our leases. She bought the building, a few months after she bought the building, someone broke into the fourth floor apartment that had been vacant upstairs. Took property management four hours to send somebody to let the police in to apprehend the person upstairs, which resulted in not only one, but four of our police officers being assaulted. We received letters, multiple letters stating that we'd have building inspections and otherwise, multiple contacts to code enforcement about the building, but yet our rent still continues to rise. There was a moratorium about a shelter that would be a low barrier and almost a safe haven for people like me. At this time, I'm not asking for a shelter. The city councils made it pretty clear where they stand on that. At this time, what I'm asking instead is protection for our tenants, the people who live in the city in the fight against rising rent costs. Yes, it's happening everywhere. But in Lewiston, we have a deficit. We have a population of people who commute from Lewiston to Portland for work. If we live in Lewiston, we can't afford Portland prices. Thank you.
Further public comment? Madam Clerk, I believe we have a consent agenda?
We do. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. Item number one, amendment to the traffic schedule to add a stop sign at Water Street Alley where it intersects with Water Street. Number two, appointment to the Lewiston Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. And number three, appointment of voting delegate to the Maine Municipal Association Annual Meeting.
May I have a motion? Councilor Pease, followed by Councilor Harriman. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number four, correct?
Agenda number four, public hearing on a renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for the Acme Social Club, 255 Park Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to Acme Social Club, 255 Park Street.
May I have a motion? Councilor Pease, followed by Councilor LaChapelle. Discussion? Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number five?
Agenda number five, public hearing on an application from Dana's Garage, 193 Crowley Road, for an automobile graveyard junkyard permit. Requested action to grant an automobile graveyard junkyard permit to Dana's Garage, 193 Crowley Road, subject to the condition that no more than a thousand tires be stored on the property.
May I have a motion?
Move for passage.
Councilor Clement?
Second.
Followed by Councilor Jelineas. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number six?
Agenda number six, public hearing on an application from Grimms Industries, 50 River Road, for an automobile graveyard junkyard permit. Requested action to grant an automobile graveyard junkyard, excuse me, permit to Grimms Industries, 50 River Road, subject to the following conditions. One, the hours of operation shall be limited to 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. And two, maintain screening from the main turnpike.
May I have a motion?
Move for passage.
Councilor Clement, followed by Councilor Pease. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number seven?
Agenda number seven, public hearing on an application from the Lewiston Public Works Department, 420 River Road, for an automobile graveyard junkyard permit. Requested action to grant an automobile graveyard junkyard permit to the Lewiston Public Works Department, 420 River Road.
May I have a motion? Councilor Pease, followed by Councilor Clement. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number eight, please.
Agenda number eight, public hearing on an application from Maine Heavy Equipment, 1445 Sabata Street, for an automobile graveyard junkyard permit. Requested action to grant an automobile graveyard junkyard permit to Maine Heavy Equipment, 1445 Sabata Street.
May I have a motion? Councilor LaChapelle?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Jelineas. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council.
Are there any restrictions on the operation or crushing like Grimms?
Nothing is, right, nothing is listed in the book for this one.
So they do not crush vehicles or run a machine like that?
I don't actually know what they do there, other than what is listed in the application. And then you'll see the three departments who need to sign off have all submitted written recommendations that the license be approved. I don't know technically what they do at that facility.
Okay, thank you.
Further comment, bless you, further comment from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number nine?
Agenda number nine, public hearing on an application from Resource Waste Services of Lewiston LLC, 38 Alfred A. Plourde Parkway, for an automobile graveyard junkyard permit. Requested action to grant an automobile graveyard junkyard permit to Resource Waste Services of Lewiston LLC, 38 Alfred A. Plourde Parkway, subject to the attached conditions.
Move for passage.
Councilor Clement, followed by?
Second.
Councilor Jelineas. Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Councilor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, for my colleagues on the council, I believe Mr. Mayor and myself visited this facility earlier this year. They are innovative, to say the least, and it's amazing what they're pulling out of the waste stream for recycling. And the amount of money and investment in this operation they've put in upon the Parkway, fantastic. And I hope that they're able to continue to evolve as, as much and as fast as they have in the last year or so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Clement, and yes, I agree with the counselor from Ward Seven. We brought them doughnuts.
Six.
Councilor Six.
I was going to say, I don't know the doughnuts.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number ten?
Agenda number ten, public hearing and final passage to amend the business license ordinance to set forth purposes and standards for the issuances of local licenses for homeless shelters. Requested action of the proposed amendments to Chapter 22 Business Licenses, Article 16 Homeless Shelters of the city's Code of Ordinances, received final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion? Counselor, Counselor Pease, followed by Councilor LaChapelle. And if I can have Craig and Amy come forward at this time to take some seats at the front. And I understand Director Hattiger is currently enjoying some vacation?
That's correct.
Okay. And if we have questions, we have you, Administrator Hunter. Thank you both for, for joining us. Anything you'd like to say to kick us off here? And then, yeah, we'll take comments from the council? If there is anything?
Previously, we were following staff after they would present the changes. I don't mean to presume the role of staff in this case. So I'm happy to talk, but I don't, yeah, I don't want to overstep.
Go ahead, I can follow you.
Okay.
You've been promoted.
I, well, okay, I wasn't looking for a promotion, but thank you. So, you know, staff made the changes to the ordinance that were suggested at the previous meeting. The planning board met, and that's, I guess, what they voted on in the next item. My commentary representing the Shelter Committee and our recommendations, I think, is primarily, I mean, I guess, to keep it simple, you have, you received a letter from Chris McNell, who's a member of the Shelter Committee, and in a moment, if we discuss it further, I think it would be worthwhile bringing him up here, but he had two recommendations regarding the educational requirement. And I'll wait to get to that, but I suggest, if folks haven't seen that, to presume it's in the packet, is that correct?
It was circulated to the city council, yes.
Okay. So anyway, Chris is here to speak to his comments regarding the educational requirement, but, so he has suggestions for improvement there. Secondly, there was a suggestion brought up at the planning board. The planning board did not act on this because it was, they mentioned it was not within their purview, but a member of the planning board suggested that, given the, given that the initial recommendation for the size of the homeless shelter overlay is not what was settled upon, there was a suggestion of decreasing the buffer radius around schools and daycares from 500 feet to 250 feet because we were dealing with a much smaller geographic area. They made another recommendation that you'll take up when that item comes up, but this one is with regards to the licensing. And because the geographic area is smaller, I think that is a sensible change. I think, I think those are my main comments, and I will defer to the mayor, I guess, whether you'd like to hear from Chris now or?
Yeah, no, I think that would be good, before we start discussion, just to hear from, from Chris. I guess, yeah, well, there we go. Chris has found a microphone.
City Council, I am Chris McNell, I'm Executive Director of New Beginnings. I don't live in Lewiston, but New Beginnings has been providing emergency shelter for children in this city for over forty years. I am recommending, I'm going to just be very brief, I'm assuming you've all read the letter, but I strongly recommend that either Item 11 be stricken completely from the ordinance or that replace the current language with children or youth educational requirements. Create and maintain relationships with McKinney-Vento liaisons, mainstream schools, and alternative education programs to ensure the educational needs of youth are met. Provide youth access to technology as needed to participate in remote learning. Provide educational assessment and referrals. That is the current language and the state licensing requirements for educational attendance in an emergency shelter. If there was language included in a city ordinance that would require young people to be enrolled in an educational program, it would exclude a significant amount- to be enrolled in an educational program, it would exclude a significant amount of the young people who come to our shelter from even entering the shelter and put them at an extremely large amount of risk on the streets of Lewiston. And so I strongly recommend that this be removed or changed to the language that I've
Thank you. And at this point, I guess, discussion around the council. Counselor LaChapelle?
Yes. Director, why would it exclude an extreme amount of people?
Many of the young people we serve are unenrolled in school currently. And so I can go through a list of reasons. So if there's a young person who has a small portion of credits left to do, right, enrolling them in high school is often not the best way to do because you have to matriculate and you have to matriculate, you have to have a certain number of credits under your belt. And so when a young person like that shows up at our shelter, we work with them individually with the school. They don't enroll in the school, but we get the work from the school and we do the work at our facility to get them graduated. Other circumstances might be, the young person has not attended school for months or sometimes years, we find, and they are not prepared to enter into that environment. So there's a lot of remedial work that needs to be done over the course of time there. Also, we're in maximum of 90 days. Many of the young people who enter our shelter program are coming to us from sexual assaults, victimization on the streets, abuse, neglect, trauma, and they cannot function well even in the secure environment of our shelter, let alone being enrolled in a public school. So having them psychologically, emotionally prepared for enrolling in school is really critical before we take that step. It can actually be more damaging to try and put them into school because they get re-traumatized, they have another failure under their belt, and it prevents them from moving forward. Other young people are, you know, school is just not the environment for them. They've been kicked out, they've been expelled, they have behavior issues, mental health issues, trauma issues, and their goal is to get a Hi-Sat or a GED, right? And that is not something you enroll in school for. We can do that at our own program. Many young people, they've already achieved their high school diploma, right? They're coming to us at age 18, 19, 20, and what they need to do is work. And enrolling them in an educational program is contraindicated to what their personal goals are and their level of achievement already. And we also, you know, we work with other districts other than Lewiston School District, and there are complicated relationships between children's shelters and school districts, and there are federal requirements on transportation and attendance and enrollment. And sometimes that takes weeks to iron out, and by that time, young people are already on their way out. Our average length of stay over the past six years since I've been here has been 16 days, right? And so in a, for, to require a young person to enroll in school for that short a period of time, if it's, you know, whatever, that doesn't make a lot of sense. What we do is we try to mitigate the circumstances that created their homelessness and resolve that. Education is sometimes a component of that, but it is not the solution. The solution is family mediation, permanent stable housing, transitional housing, and supportive services surrounding them. And there is a time at which those supportive services include education, but they are not the first thing that you need to do. The first thing you need to do is figure out why this young person is here, what have they experienced that they need to resolve to either return home, and that's the most likely outcome for youth that we serve who are in that 10 to 17-year range, is that they're gonna go home in about 16 days. And so we focus on that work with the family, not with the school, because in 16 days, they're gonna go back to school.
Excellent. Would you please reread what you suggest?
Yes, absolutely.
So just a little slower because I was trying to find?
I'm a fast talker, and I didn't want to go over my three minutes, but I know I'm not being timed, so I'll go slow this time. So the current state statute is create and maintain relationships with McKinney-Vento liaisons, and those are people that are federally required to be in every school district to create pathways for homeless youth towards education. Mainstream schools and alternative education programs to ensure the educational needs of youth are met. Provide youth access to technology as needed to participate in remote learning. Provide educational assessment and referrals. And I think, you know, that educational assessment and referrals, that happens with every youth who comes through our door. And, and with, in partnership with that young person, their family, and the school district, we determine whether or not an enrollment is what's needed at that point in time. What we're really trying to do is figure out what is gonna help this young person move out of homelessness as quickly as possible. And sometimes education is that, and most of the time, it's not. It's family conflict. That's the majority of the reasons we see young people in our shelter. And if we can resolve that and not have them switch schools or not have them do a bunch of paperwork that's not even gonna be filed by the time they leave, then we're better off, and so are they.
Excellent. Thank you for getting back. The intent of the council was to do whatever we can to assist the youth. And thank you for bringing that forward and your expertise, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Quite welcome, thank you for listening.
Mister Mayor?
Counselor Clement?
Might I ask if the gentleman has a copy of that wording to provide to the clerk?
I have a copy of it.
You have a copy?
Yeah.
Okay. In the event this comes up as an amendment, it would be helpful rather than trying to?
I believe it's in the packet as well.
And just, I'm sorry, Director McNell, so just to be clear, your, your first preference is that 11 be simply struck? And what, but if we did, if the council did require language, you offer that as a proposal?
Absolutely, because it is in absolute alignment with what we are currently required to do by the state.
Right.
But?
Oh, so that, so that, what you just read is already required by the state?
Yes, absolutely. It's in our state licensing requirements.
Gotcha. Thank you so much. Further comments from the council? Oh, sorry, Counselor Jelineus?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I know that Agenda Item Number 10 has more things in it, but I'll speak, if I might, about the ordinance change suggested as it pertains to education. First, I want to thank you, Director McNell, for, for sending this information, emailing this to, this letter to us and providing your, your expertise. I especially appreciate the eight bullet points where you outline, you know, the variety of reasons. And, you know, I will say to you, as an educator, licensed teacher, that I'm all about education, right? I run an educational program. But I also understand, have come to understand a little bit better, you know, what homelessness really is about. And when I think about basic needs and I think about housing, you know, even though education's important, I don't see that as a top priority right away, at least. I appreciated your recommendations and support them.
Thank you.
I would be in favor of striking Item 11 because quite frankly, Item 11, you had two suggestions. I would support the first one because frankly, the second one is already happening, and it's not?
It would be redundant.
Right, sorry. And, you know, as we talk a little bit more about this and we think about, you know, one of the reasons that I'm also in support of the coordinated entry system, when we talk about shelters is exactly, this is a great example?
Absolutely.
Why that process is important, so?
And youth shelters participate in coordinated entry. We're actually a coordinated entry hub.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Scott?
I'd like to thank you also for that information. I think it's really important, and I hope that we do look at this as a possible change for that particular piece. I think that this is, this is what our state language is saying. There are programs in place, there are, there are the necessary stepping stones in place already, and I'm comfortable with having that in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. Also, thank you for, for speaking and for sending this along to us. This doesn't necessarily apply maybe to, to your particular shelter, but I'm also concerned about the language in here. If it's requiring everyone who's, who is considered a youth to enroll in, in some kind of schooling or something, that would exclude any children who are younger than school age because there, there wouldn't be any programs for them to, to enroll in. So I would also support just, just striking Item 11. And it would, yeah, it seems like shelters are going to do what's best for the, the children who, who are being sheltered in them. And if that includes getting them hooked up with, with the school or whether it's some other type of alternative education, I think that we can trust them to do that and avoid some of the pitfalls that, that this section would create. Thank you.
Would somebody like to make a motion, striking that?
Yeah, I'd make that motion to strike Item 11.
Counselor Harriman, can you please restate that?
So I would move to, let me get this in front of me here, to, to strike Item 11 under letter, I believe it's letter I, in the, in the ordinance?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, to, to remove that section from the ordinance.
We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I would second that.
Discussion on this amendment. Counselor LaChapelle?
Yes, Mister Mayor, thank you. I would encourage us to replace Number 11 with the wording that the director had. Replace that definition with the Number Two, and he has the paperwork that Craig provided us. So I would not be in favor of just striking and eliminating it. I would like to see it just replaced, the wording in 11 right now, just replaced with that other wording. That would be my suggestion.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I would concur with the counselor from Ward Four, if that could be offered perhaps as a friendly amendment. Would that be acceptable to the main motion?
We currently have a motion on the, on the floor?
That's true, we have a motion on the floor, but this could be a friendly amendment that would take care of that and replace everything, save us a whole bunch of votes on something.
Anything further, Counselor?
No, I'm all set, Mister Mayor.
Counselor Harriman?
I appreciate that, but it wouldn't address the issue of younger children, and it also, it just seems like it would be, it would be redundant if it's already, you know, required at the state level. So, yeah, for that reason, I would stand with my original motion.
Counselor Scott?
I would be comfortable with replacing what's in 11 with that language.
Counselor Pease?
I also favor that. Change that language, the new language that we provided makes a lot more sense.
Thank you, Counselors. You know, I think that as Director McNell is, you know, sort of the expert in the room on this, and considering that it already is covered under state law, this, as he has already stated, would be redundant and completely unnecessary. So, yeah, I, I will be voting in favor of this current motion.
Move the question, Mister Mayor.
We have a motion to, to move the question. Do we have a second for that? Second. And counsel, I'm sorry, madam, we do have a second, Counselor LaChapelle. Madam Clerk, can you, it would take five votes to move the question, correct?
Correct, yes.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
And Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero to move the question. So now the motion before you is to delete Section I-11 as printed in the proposed ordinance. Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
No.
Word Five?
No.
Word Six?
No.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
No.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Motion failed by a vote of three to four.
Counselor LaChapelle?
I move that we replace the wording in Number 11 with the wording that the director proposed to us.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, and then seconded by Counselor Clement. Director McNell, do you mind reading that one more time?
Not at all.
For the benefit of our home audience?
The language that would be in, replacing it would be create and maintain relationships with McKinney-Vento liaisons, mainstream schools, and alternative education programs to ensure the educational needs of youth are met. Provide youth access to technology as needed to participate in remote learning. Provide educational assessment and referrals.
Thank you. Counselor Harriman?
Thanks. Yeah, I just have a question, and I don't know who this should go to as far as my, so my previous concern about younger children who are not old enough for school, they would still fall under this, this requirement. And I, so I don't know, I mean, I suppose this new language would sort of, would, would just make it so it's whoever is eligible?
Correct, yeah.
So that, that would, seems like that would address that issue.
And, and most of those younger children would be in a family shelter. The, our youngest age allowable by license is 10 years old. So every young person who comes into our program under the age of 18 or who hasn't graduated would be under this language. Anyone younger than that would not be in our shelter.
Okay. And so in, in that case, this, this language will apply to all shelters, including family Okay. Okay, I think I understand that now, thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. So that particular language does not eliminate in any new family homeless shelter that a child under the age of 10 would not be allowed into the shelter, right? It just, it just ensures that any new homeless shelter that is a family homeless shelter in my, if I'm understanding this correctly, is going to follow the laws that the state already has in place by having that advocate there, by having those resources available for those kids so that they can reach those goals, whether it's actually enrolling in a school or going through a program like what they have, which is the GED program or something, which would not be enrolled in the schools. But it would not eliminate the ability of a family with a six-month-old or a three-year-old who would not be in an educational program to be in that homeless shelter, that family homeless shelter. Am I correct with that? Okay. So I understand it to now.
Further discussion among the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
Could you restate the, the motion that we're voting?
Sure, sure. The motion before you is to replace the language in I-11 with the new language as read from the podium.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving on the committee. Further comments from the council about the ordinance?
Yes, Mister Mayor.
Oh, Counselor LaChapelle?
Thank you. The definitions on page one, why was that changed from the last council meeting? I don't know who to ask that question to.
As far as the caregiver language?
No, homeless family means one or, or two caregivers persons includes at least one or more children or youth.
Looking at the legal review, that was a suggested nomenclature replacement for the city attorney.
Educate me, why?
Because the caregiver aspect, looking at the concerns that were expressed at the last many, minute, meeting for Counselor from Ward One, where she may not be a legal guardian, the caregiver language is now more universally adopted, and that's why he suggested that language.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. So as was, as was mentioned a little bit earlier, I've got concerns about these buffers. If we, I mean, we can see on the, the map, if we flip ahead to Item 11, looking at the overlay that was, that's currently in place there, and then the buffers around, around schools and daycares, we really end up with, we end up with less available real estate than what we, what the current condition is. And, and the, the recommendation from the Shelter Committee was to look at increasing that available real estate in order to prevent? the Shelter Committee was to look at increasing that available real estate in order to prevent the concentration of shelters in one particular part of town and, you know, unduly affecting the, that part of town. So I just have some, have some real concerns about those buffers. And, I mean, we can't, we'll, we'll talk about the overlay in the next agenda item, but the buffers fall under this one.
What number's the buffers again?
Sorry, what number's the buffers? The number in the ordinance?
Yeah.
Uh, 7. It's number 7. Proximity to school and daycares.
I-7, yes.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd like to hear what others have to say, but I would, I would make a motion to, to strike number 7 from that. There, we don't have any, as far as I know, we don't have any buffers around any other housing types in the city. I don't see why we would, if we don't have buffers around other things, why we would need a buffer around, around homeless shelters as well. And what we have here really restricts what we, where they can be located, and I think really could concentrate them and really tie people's hands as to where they would, where they would go.
Counselor LaChapelle, oh, sorry, sorry, please.
Yeah, so I, I move that we strike number 7 under, under letter I.
Letter I.
Do we have a second? I guess that motion has failed. Further discussion from the council? Counselor LaChapelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I, I hear Council Harriman's concerns. The fact of the matter is, if we look at the map, and I know we're going to talk about that in a moment, but if we look at map, we've actually increased the, the space for a shelter. But I understand the implications of maybe the 500-foot, maybe we should be lowering that a little bit to 300 feet instead of the 500 feet. And just, instead of a 500-foot buffer, a 300-foot buffer, or something to that effect, understanding it. But our, if we look at the square footage, we have definitely increased the square footage of availability for shelters in comparison to what is currently existing right now. So I, I would suggest that. I'd be open to bringing it down to 300 feet. Just a suggestion.
I, yeah, I mean, the shield, Mr. Sotomayor, the Shelter Committee recommendation was to, to have no buffers, is that correct?
That was the recommendation in our report.
And if the, the rest?
Sorry, let me, let me clarify. That, that was, that was, you know, our report had, had tiered recommendations based upon, you know, our, that was our first recommendation. We had ones following up that, taking a lot of things into consideration, but at any rate. And today, as I, I was offering that item, you know, for discussion to council, in, in part because it was also suggested at the Planning Board meeting, not as a resolution by the Planning Board, but during the discussion of it, the suggestion of lowering it specifically to 250 feet as, as a solution to address that came up. So I wanted to relay that.
Thank you, Mr. Sotomayor. Yeah, I, I mean, if, I would prefer that there be no buffers, but if there was a buffer, I think 100 feet ought to do it. Further discussion from the council? Counselor Scott?
Thank you. So I would concur that, I think that 500 feet is extensive, and it does, I think, eliminate some stuff. But I would also be willing to take the Planning Board's recommendation of 250 if that would be something that the council would agree upon. I understand that we want no buffers. I, I'm trying to find compromise here so that we can pass this ordinance as soon as possible and end this moratorium. And I would like to see if we could work towards that.
Mr. Mayor, may I just correct?
Oh, please.
I just want to make sure the record's clear. The Planning Board did not recommend 250 feet because it was not within their purview. They were just speaking about the overlay, but it came up in discussion?
At that moment.
The, the 250 came up in discussion, and there were some nodding heads, and they said, "Well, that's not, that's a licensing thing, not Planning Board."
Right.
So I just want to make sure.
But it wasn't a unanimous vote from the Planning Board.
They didn't vote at all.
So they talked about a lot of other issues also.
They talk about things.
So to say that was submitted from the Planning Board?
It was not submitted by the Planning Board.
Would not be a fair statement.
All, all I'm saying is that it came up in discussion.
Thank you for that point.
And on behalf of the Shelter Committee, I'm saying that, that idea is consistent with what we were trying to get at. That is all.
Counselor Bees?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm more inclined also to go to the 250. I don't think 100's going to do it. And what happens is, it's one building law. If you have one building, the next building over, you can put a shelter. So I think 250 is a, is a good balance. At least that gives them like two or three buildings down, then they can have a shelter. Thank you.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think 300 feet is totally acceptable. As far as I'm concerned, it's the length of a football field, very easy to estimate. It's reasonable. I don't have a problem with 500 feet, but I'll, in the spirit of cooperation and moving this along, which was the intent of this body in the first place, since day one, I would suggest, or I would propose a motion that we amend the ordinance as it refers to the buffer zone from 500 feet down to 300 feet. And ask if there's a second for that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We now have a, a motion on the table for, to move the buffers down to 300 feet. Discussion on this agenda, or discussion on this amendment. Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the, while the overlay district, the, the overlay district is larger, appears to be larger than the current areas where shelters are permitted, once you take out the parts with the buffers, it becomes smaller, significantly smaller. I would also ask, because I haven't, I have tried to come up with a reason for it, and I haven't come up with one, I would ask people why there needs to be a buffer. As I said before, I don't know of any other housing in the city that has buffers around it, rooming houses, apartment houses. So I haven't gotten an answer yet as to why there needs to be a buffer. And I wonder if somebody could explain, because I, I can't really support, I just don't see the reason to have a buffer at all. Thank you.
Comments from the Shelter Committee co-chairs on the proposed 300-feet buffer?
I have no further comments. I think you have the information you need to make a decision.
So I, I am also concerned that the buffers are, are not necessary. And they, you know, we've already, you know, kind of decreased the overlay, and the buffers are just a way to further decrease that, and really kind of limit where, where shelter can go, when in fact, we do have the unhoused and homeless all, all over our city at this very moment. And I, I think they're just, you know, a, a 300-foot buffer is still a little excessive and just a needless restriction at this point. Counselor LaChapelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To say that this is less than what currently exists is disingenuous at best. It's not accurate at all. We, we take into consideration some of the things that happened in the past in the Amory. I, I think this is more than, I think it's a good compromise to drop the, the zone down and make it a little more accessible from some of the daycares or schools or those facilities. It's, if, if you look at the maps, there's still more space with what we've had on the overlay. So I, I stand by, and just wanted to clarify some of the misquotes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bees?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, because if you don't have any buffers at all, you can open up a shelter right at the high school, right at Longley School. You can open one right?
It's not within the overlay.
Pardon?
It's not within the overlay.
It was off Bartlett Street. Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Without Director Heger, we don't have our overhead map.
This is East Avenue. Isn't that East Avenue?
What we're talking, it'd be down here.
Then why is that all in blue?
Because that's the school district. That's the school. It's the local high school area. So they're talking, I think that would be probably, still just breaking it down as you just.
Anything further, Counselor Bees?
No, thank you.
Okay, in the spirit of compromise again, hear me out. When we talk about the buffers, we talk about the schools. I know for a fact that we already have homeless sleeping in Franklin pasture right now, right outside our high school, and right in between Longley School and the high school. I would prefer, personally, that we had a homeless shelter available there versus having the homeless sleeping right outside of our schools, that it's already happening right now. I understand what you're saying, but I fear that as we go through each of these things, if we get stuck in the mud, we're not going to get anywhere tonight, and I'm fearful of that. I'm fearful of that because I, I agreed to a compromise the last time, that I will extend this moratorium so that we can get this work done, and I am fearful that we're going to keep going. So I ask, how do we get through this? If we already have homeless folks sleeping right next to schools, are the buffers necessary? Is the buffer going to deter? It will deter a homeless shelter from being built next to a school, but will it deter a homeless person from sleeping in the woods right outside of our schools? It happens at McMahon, it's happening in the woods at Montello, it's happening in several places. So I ask, is this something that we can, how is that going to, I'm just asking for a conversation here around this. Can we, will that help with that particular piece?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Clement?
I would offer that we're not here to prohibit homeless people from sleeping anywhere. We're here to develop a licensing ordinance for homeless shelters. And in that vein, I ask that we move this question. Thank you.
Do we have a second to move the question? That motion has failed. Counselor Harriman?
I would still, I would still propose, if anybody could give a reason as to why there needs to be a buffer around a school and a daycare. I don't, I haven't heard of a reason why.
Counselor LaChapelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, may I ask Counselor a question?
Please direct your, your question to the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, would you, if I changed it to 250 feet, would that be acceptable to Counselor from Ward 1, where she mentioned it earlier? Would you ask Counselor from Ward 1?
Counselors, I guess, can we, I guess I'll chime in on what, you know, what your ideal buffer would be?
Okay, so in that case, in light that you refuse to ask that question, I would amend my motion to make it to 250 feet instead of 300 feet.
There's a motion on the floor already, Counselor.
I would, I made the motion for 300 feet, so I can amend my motion. Can I not?
A point of order.
I believe I made the.
Point of order. Madam Clerk, can we amend a motion at this point?
No, the motion, once it's moved and seconded, it's now owned by the body and owned by the group, and it needs to be controlled by the group. And so to amend it, it would need to go through the formal amendment process of a motion, a second, and an actual vote on the amendment part.
You can't do a friendly amendment to it?
Well, the, according to my notes, the motion was moved by the Counselor from Ward 6, seconded by the Counselor of Ward 4.
Okay. I would reckon, I would ask if you would consider a friendly amendment.
I would consider anything that would move this process along.
Okay, so I would, would you accept that?
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
As the first, and I'm as the second?
Madam Clerk, we would need to vote on that, correct?
So we're, you're just changing it from the 350, I'm sorry, from the 300 to the 250?
Lowering it from 500 to 250.
Yes, thank you, thank you. But the original motion was 5 to 3, and this is now going from 3 to 250.
Correct.
Basically right. So it seems like via unanimous consent, if the council seems to be in agreement with that, Mr. Mayor, then it could be incorporated as a friendly amendment into the main motion.
Do we have unanimous consent for that?
Unanimous or majority?
Unanimous consent for Roberts rules for friendly amendment.
Okay, the vote on it. Okay.
We didn't, yeah, we do not have unanimous consent for that.
Stay late, folks.
Counselor, thank you. So can you please restate the motion on the floor, Madam Clerk?
So the motion on the floor is to amend section I-7 of the proposed ordinance and to change the proposed language of 500 feet to 300 feet.
Further discussion on this? Counselor Jolinas?
I would just thank my counselor, my colleague Counselor 1, Ward 1, for bringing up the point you did about the necessity or lack of necessity for what we're discussing. And to my Counselor, Ward 3, I really don't have a response. I do, however, feel like I want to move this forward, and I'm willing to compromise to make that happen. Thank
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. I'm just concerned that, that even at 300, there's still too much area that would be exempted. I would remind everyone that as this is currently written, shelters are conditional uses. They would have to go before the Planning Board. They also, as the ordinance is currently written, they have to come before City Council for approval. So it's, this is only one piece of the restrictions that will be in place. I think it's, the overlay district is significantly less than what the, what the Shelter Committee had recommended. And I feel like adding another, a buffer on top of that around all these uses, including other daycares that, that may open in the future, possibly schools, but probably just daycares. It just, it just doesn't allow enough room to locate shelters, and we're in such a desperate need now. Thank you.
Without further comment, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Sure. Counselor from Ward 3?
No.
Ward 4?
No.
Ward 5?
No.
Ward 6?
No.
Ward 7?
No.
Ward 1?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
Motion failed by a vote of 7.
Counselor LaChapelle?
Mr. Mayor, I move at this time that we replace the restriction, lower the restriction from 500 feet to 250 feet.
Seconded.
Form of a motion.
And then Counselor Clement, you have seconded it?
I did.
So now we have 250. Any discussion? Counselor Harriman?
Again, I, I still, I understand compromising, but I still, I feel like the things we do should have a purpose behind them. And I still, nobody has told me why there needs to be a buffer around homeless shelters, between homeless shelters and schools or child cares. If somebody can sleep in the woods behind the childcare or the school, why is it worse to have them in a shelter next door? I, I just think that what we do should have a purpose, and I still haven't heard one. Thank you.
I'm concerned that these, you know, buffer comes from the perceived stigma of homeless shelters and the unhoused in general, and, yeah. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
No.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
Motion passed by a vote of five to two.
Further discussion on the ordinance?
Is this agenda item number 10 still?
Yeah, oh, yes, yeah. We've, we've completed two amendments, correct, Madam Clerk?
I know, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to go back. Pardon me for a minute. I wasn't here on September 6th when comments were made regarding the ordinance changes suggested. You know, I, I'm particularly concerned about some of the exemptions. I've said it before, and I'll say it again. I'm very appreciative of our existing shelters, but I'm a strong believer that if we're really ever going to break the cycle and address homelessness, we really need to consider, you know, coordinated entry system, a 24-hour shelter, those kinds of things that the committee has brought forth. I just personally have a hard time living in an area where I know it's so cold, there's nowhere for people to go. And it's frustrating for me because on the one hand, you know, I feel like, you know, we're talking about this as a council. We're trying to address it. And yet, I still continue to hear over and over and over again, "Look at all the people in the streets during the day." And my response sometimes is, "Where are they supposed to go? We, we don't have a 24-hour," you know. So I guess for me, I really, if we're going to do this, I want to do it well. And I'd mentioned before, it's no disrespect to what's being done. I think it's been, been awesome, and I appreciate it. But just because we've done things a certain way, it doesn't make it right. And I feel like the amount of time, I believe it was 2028? Am I right, Craig? 2028 would have been the amount of time that we would ask people to come into. Does that, does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. You know, and I understand the fear about, well, gee, you know, we're going to lose these shelters. Are we going to lose them if we insist on this? But, you know, I, I really feel like we can come together and support and make this happen. I don't think it's like, figure this out and let us know how it goes until 2028. I don't think that's the kind of community we live in. I think this has been a topic that we've discussed over and over again. We want to address it. There's a lot of community people that can make up a committee and help make this right for the, the, for the shelters that would be, you know, impacted. And I, I say this because I think if we're ever going to address it, we need to address it well and comprehensively. And I believe that, you know, this coordinated entry system that I've spoken of now, I think is the way to do it. It's not going to be, you know, we, we need more than just providing a bed at night. And I know I've used this analogy before, but, you know, we, we can't just give someone a fish. We have to teach them how to fish. And that comes with the coordinated entry system. All of that service that I'm, that I'm referencing comes with that. And so I, again, I know I was not here on the 6th of September. I wasn't able to comment on that, but I needed just to share those thoughts. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask through you if Counselor Jolinas would just say that that's the one piece she wants out of the exemptions? Is the number five coordinated entry systems? So that way, it would actually be, everything else would remain the same as in respect to the exemptions except for the coordinated entry systems?
Counselor Jolinas, you mentioned a couple of different things. What, what are your thoughts?
Well, you know, my thoughts are, I want to see this move forward. I want to see this moratorium lifted. I want to see us to make some progress, which is why I'm willing to make some compromises. You know, you're right. I've mentioned two things. I've talked about the need to have a 24/7 shelter. I've also talked about the need to have a coordinated entry system, and those are, you know, different. I understand that. I would be willing to request that the language in number five on page seven be lifted, yes. But I also just want to hear from my colleagues. You know, I just think it's an important point for us to consider tossing about.
Further discuss, Counselor Scott?
Thank you. So in respect to the coordinated entry systems, where it says here that participate in the statewide coordinated entry system and the availability to all guests of onsite case management, service coordination, and rehousing assistance either by shelter staff or a third party. I think that's the piece right there, or a third party. So in having a five-year chance to come up to that standard, even if a shelter feels like they don't have the staff, there are a third party or somebody else that could do that work. And I would have to say that I, I wouldn't disagree with that. I would agree that maybe that piece could be taken out of the exemptions. The other stuff, I will be quite honest, and I said it last week, I, I do have concerns about. I really appreciate what our current shelters are doing. We don't know when somebody's going to come in for another new shelter. It could be as soon as this is done. It could, it may not be for another three years or so. And I would hate to limit our existing shelters. I do understand that particular piece, but I think that on the other step, requiring them to be, I understand where, we need somebody to come in and open a shelter for 24/7. We need those services available. If we require an existing shelter to do the 24/7 piece, will we lose that shelter because they can't get the staff or they're not feeling that they can accommodate that piece? Is where I'm a little bit concerned about. But the coordinated entry system, I would totally agree with removing that from the exemption piece.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. So Counselor Scott's comment sort of referenced the question that I had. It sounds like the last, the last clause there, either by shelter staff or a third party. My question is, it sounds like that is saying that the shelter would have to allow the case management, service coordination, and rehousing assistance to take place, but they wouldn't have to provide the staff to do it? Am I understanding that correctly? I don't know if I can ask Craig and Amy, or-
Yeah, that, that is what, what I'm reading. I believe that was the intent. An example would be, you know, the Lewiston Housing has a housing navigator. And there's some other agencies with housing navigators that can go to a site and work with people on rehousing assistance. And the housing navigators have specific resources available to them that shelters not participating in the state system might have access to, or I should say, those, you know, that aren't funded by the state, might not have access to. Certain vouchers and things that can help people get rapidly rehoused more easily. So, so they could come to the site and, and do that work.
Thank you.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've heard what my colleague from Ward Seven had to say. She wasn't here for the record-breaking meeting that we had, but I agree with what she's had to say, and I don't see a problem with removing that. I would vote in favor of that.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion that we remove number five from I, approval and operations requirement, and for the exemption part of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I believe she wants it from, removed from J.
From J, excuse me, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yes. I was reading it, and I, I apologize, yes.
Thank you, Administrator Hunter. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Harriman? Discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
In regards to 24/7, so, I guess I would like to hear from the shelter co-chairs. So one of the things that I was concerned about beyond, beyond cost and staffing levels, are the current shelters even, I guess, equipped for, for 24/7 use? Like, is there community rooms? Like, is the building built for that? If, if that makes sense? Or your thoughts?
So, so some shelters provide 24/7 right now, and some do not. And the ones that do not, I don't think that, there, there may be space limitations, but I have not heard that specific concern expressed. But I, the capacity to do it, especially from a staffing perspective, I think, was expressed to me by, by shelter, some of the shelter operators. There, I think, in terms of how they do their programming and management, there may be specific reasons why they prefer a system where people need to, you know, are expected to leave and have permission to come back in. So it may also be a part of their safety management systems. So I don't, I don't think I can say, I can't represent much more than there, there were concerns expressed about their ability to meet that type of standard.
Thank you. Further discussion on that or any other topic regarding this ordinance? At this point, we will go to public comment for this agenda item. Each person will have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donald Jellison. I live in Lisbon, Maine. And I'm here on behalf of 100 Pine Street. It has been operating for four and a half years. And many people that have come through that door has been rehabilitated from alcohol abuse, drug abuse, because we are an alcohol-drug-free home. And we have encouraged many of them to go out and work in the community, earn wages so they could get out of that situation and have a place of their own, rent an apartment. It's been very successful. We do not depend on any government aid whatsoever. And indeed, we are a 24/7 facility. That saying, we do not have bars on the windows and doors. If people feel like they want to go out on, on the street, they're free to do so as long as they adhere to the rules that we set forth, that they cannot use alcohol, they cannot use drugs. We've seen some very good things happen at that shelter. My concern on that buffer is what happens if a daycare all of a sudden comes next door? How is that affecting the shelter that is already there? Is, is that going to be affected? And they go to the shelter and say, "You gotta, you gotta shut down"? I would like to see that somewhat still amended. And we had this sprung on us just recently with the nine-page ordinance. Just scanning over. I would ask you to use wisdom and to table this for 30 days. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel. I live in Ward Seven, your friendly little shelter friend over here. I've been here since the beginning, before the moratorium was in place. We're not strangers. We know who we are. I do agree that we need some language grandfathering our current shelters because, I mean, I helped put in 100 Pine Street painting walls with Brianna and John. If someone were to open a daycare downtown, because let's face it, everybody needs childcare if we want people working. We need to protect the shelters that are already here. Opening a new one and having ordinances like this is a wonderful thing, and I applaud you guys for working so hard to come to it and working so hard. I see that. But at the same time, we can't risk what's already here, but we also can't stop the progression of the city. Personally, I would say get rid of the buffer altogether. You're going to have homeless people. It doesn't matter where you are. All this buffer does is say, "You can't put a shelter there." It doesn't mean someone's not sleeping in the trees behind the school. Doesn't mean somebody's not sleeping against the fence behind the daycare center. People sleep against the fence all day over at Promise where my daughter goes to preschool. It's not a secret. You guys drive by and walk by it every day.
Excuse me, do you mind lowering your voice a little bit, please?
Yeah, I don't mind at all, sorry.
Thank you.
But you guys walk by, you see these things every day. Like, you can't pretend that you don't. You can't pretend that the buffer is magically going to solve that problem. Because it's not. All you're saying is, "I can't take a building and say, 'This is a shelter within,' what did we say, 250 feet of a daycare or a school." Daycare is saturating a lot of the city, and a lot of people don't realize that there are in-home daycares because they don't have signs out front. They have a license that hangs in their hallway. So don't put our current shelters at risk by not having a grandfather clause. At least put that somewhere in there. Grandfather who's already here and limit who's new. That way, we're protecting what we have, but we're allowing growth at the same time.
Hi, Shelley Norton, Deputy Planning Director. I just wanted to clarify that typically, if there wasn't anything specific, the way code and planning would treat new use is that they would need to comply, but an existing use wouldn't have to cease operation because of a new use coming in. If you wanted to put in some language, that could certainly be done, but I don't think that that's necessary to protect existing shelters.
Thank you, Ms. Norton.
My name's Dave Villaldo. I live in Auburn, but I've worked in Lewiston for 34 years. I've been the path coordinator, which was helping homeless people. I work with both shelters. I've moved on from that since, but I'm on the homeless committee. I just wanted to say that in the spirit of compromise, I want to applaud the City Council for what they've done today. This has been a good move. Nobody's going to get everything they want. I don't think there should be boundaries neither, but I applaud the City Council for their work today and for their compromise.
Further public comment? If you, oh, oh, yes. We're bringing the mic to you.
My name's Michael. I don't live in Lewiston, but I volunteer here in Lewiston. And I do applaud you for your, your motivation, or at least what I sense might be your motivation, and that's to help the homeless. But, you know, I, I'm looking at these ordinances, and I'm, I, I offer rides to homeless people all the time to homeless shelters, and they don't want to go. They're happy. Now, that's not all of them, but it's the majority of them, believe it or not. Try it sometime. Hey, can I give you a ride over to a homeless shelter? Stop and talk to them. Find out what their story is. Most of them are not homeless. They're just panhandling. Okay? "Well, I got a place to stay. I just, I can't, I can't work," or "I can't do this," or "I can't do that," or probably the real answer is that I don't want to work. The exemptions are good for the, for the existing homeless shelters that you've put in. We appreciate that. But, you know, Ronald Reagan has a famous quote, "The nine most scariest words in the English language are, 'I'm from the government and I'm here to help.'" I'm not sure you're helping. I can't imagine anyone, under all the non-exemption regulations, would open up a homeless shelter in Lewiston. We're thinking of opening, opening a women's Christian home. Sheltered by Jesus is not a homeless shelter. It's a men's Christian home. We'll have that discussion next year. But there's no way we'd do it in Lewiston at this point. Not with all of this that's going on. You know, it's, it's, it's- You know, it's, it's, uh, it's, uh... What they need is the Lord, and it seems like the homeless shelters that are here in Lewiston are all faith-based. The whole staffing thing, the educational thing, you know, for the kids, that's great. New Beginnings did a great job, and Rick's, Rick's should be applauded for that. The adults, uh, men that we service, um, they need a kick in the butt. They need a hand up, not a handout, right? They need, um, they need to understand that they're accountable and responsible, and that's what we do, you know, we help them. If there's mental, uh, if, 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 if it's a mental disorder, then we're not the place for them to be. And, but unfortunately, they end up at our doorstep, and we do our best to get them the services that they need. Drugs and alcohol are the biggest reason for homelessness. If you just arrest the drug dealers, put them in jail and keep them in jail, I'm almost done, Carl, just five, five more seconds. That would be a big help, and I'm, I'm counting down, so I'm gone, but...
Thank you.
I don't, not sure you're helping.
Further public comment?
I'm not in a wheelchair, but I, my name's Don Colman, I live in Auburn, and I also help at the homeless shelter. Just one question. The gentleman from Area Two, Johansson, is it? I don't, I can't read...
Harriman.
Oh, Harriman, yes.
War Three.
He asked a question that was not answered, and I would like to hear the answer. Why do you need a buffer? Can someone up there amongst you distinguished people tell me that? No one's answered it, why?
Further, uh, public comment?
Do I not get an answer?
We're gonna be heading back to, uh, council, um, discussion in a second. Uh, any further public comment? Uh, yeah, back to the council for discussion.
I'm not sure how I can make public comments.
Uh, well, you, you and Craig are part of the discussion here, but please speak into the mic.
So I just wanted to say that I didn't think about the inverse of like a daycare wanting to open up next to a homeless shelter, and so the buffer zone would make that impossible. It feels like the conversation has been, there's an existing daycare and then a shelter couldn't open up near that, and so that's just kind of an interesting thing to think about when we're talking about these buffers, because there is a brand-new daycare going in at 115 Pine, which is very close to two other shelters. So I just wanted to sort of make that point. And just the other item is, when we're thinking about these buffer zones and we're coming up with these numbers, you know, they're, as we've seen tonight, they're open to a lot of, um, uh, debate, and they're, they're kind of arbitrary. And so I'm just personally curious also why we feel we need a buffer, and, um, if a buffer gets put in, I'm hoping that because of the spirit of compromise and all the conversations that we've had here, that our intent is to serve the homeless. And if somebody has the right building and the right staffing and the right funding and the right this and that, and it's 100 feet from a daycare, are we really not gonna let that project happen? So I just wanted to express those thoughts.
Counselor, uh, Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would assume that somebody could apply for a waiver if that were to be the case.
There's no waiver language currently in the ordinance.
Nothing that would allow them in, any of the general ordinances or anything would allow them to appeal or...
You can only appeal the license.
Uh, excuse me, thank you, sir. Administrator Hunter, please continue.
At this point, because of the language that is drafted, there is, there would be no waiver for those particular elements.
Then that's something we could amend in the future. Our, our aim here tonight, Mr. Mayor, I think, is to get this moving. We have several questions that could be amended in the future. Let's get something in place, get it working, and then see how it's working. If need to amend it, let's do it. We can sit here all night moving questions, moving amendments and stuff, and still get nothing accomplished. We need to move this along, it's been since February, sir. Thank you.
For, excuse me, sir, thank you. If the audience could please be respectful and quiet, I would appreciate it. Further, uh, public comment is now over. Further discussion from the council? Anything further to add, um, from the co-chairs?
Is anybody gonna answer that question?
Uh, Counselor Jelenaus?
I, you know, I've, I've said it before, um, you know, I appreciate the comments that have been made, um, by some of my colleagues and certainly Amy, um, I, I don't have an answer for that question, unfortunately, I just don't.
Somebody should.
Agreed.
If you're gonna amend it, with boundaries on, in place, if somebody should have...
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If the audience could please be quiet, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Further comments from the council? Counselor Harriman?
I, I would agree with the public comment. If there's, if there's no reason to put something in there, there, there is the chance to amend something in the future, but why would it need to be put in there if the plan is to amend it, or if there is no reason for it? I come back to the, the previous question, what is the purpose of it?
Yes, now, I also question the necessity for, for buffers, but any other further comment at this time from the council? Madam Plur, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word Three?
And are we voting on the, the main motion here?
Yes.
Agenda item number 11?
Or, no, 10.
No, 10.
Item number, item number 10 is to adopt the ordinance and all of the amendments that we've incorporated into it, into tonight, yes.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 11.
Item number 11, public hearing and final passage to amend the zoning and land use code for purposes of defining homeless shelters, creating a homeless shelter overlay district, and parking requirements for homeless shelters. Requested action that the proposed amendments to Appendix A, Article Two, Section Two, Definitions, Article Eleven, District Regulations, Section Twenty-Two, Land Use Requirements, and Section Twenty-Four-Six, Homeless Shelter Overlay District, and Section Twelve, Article Twelve, Section Seventeen-D, Off-Street Parking Required of the City's Zoning and Land Use Code, received final passage by a roll call vote.
We have a motion, please. Counselor Clement, followed by Counselor LaChapelle. Uh, and we have, um, our city planner, Shelley Norton, uh, joined us at the table here. Uh, is there anything you'd like to start us off with, uh, um, Ms. Norton?
Yes, good evening.
And we have our laptop, thank you.
Yes, we do have a laptop, okay. So I do have, uh, maps available this evening, um, if we wish to look at those, but the item number 11, um, I am just reporting back to you, uh, what was sent to the planning board and what their response was. So on September 12th, the planning board voted to send a favorable recommendation back to you to adopt, um, the overlay district, um, depicted on Appendix, or Exhibit B, um, which you had, uh, amended at your meeting on September 6th, so that, um, sorry, my map.
We're just getting straight up here.
Exhibit B, yes, and so, um, that passed through the planning board, uh, five to two. There was certainly a lot of discussion, as was mentioned, um, by Craig and others this evening at that meeting, and a number of the counselors were present and heard some of that conversation, um, but it, um, did have a majority that voted for, um, this particular Exhibit B that the, um, council had put forward. Uh, they also voted in favor of the definition of homeless shelters, um, as well as the parking requirements for homeless shelters, and, um, provided a favorable recommendation back to you for both of those items, um, which are what, uh, number 11 of your agenda is. There was a, a fourth thing that they did do, um, which is non-binding on the council, but they made a recommendation that there would be a second portion of ta, of the city identified as an overlay for homeless shelters. They recommended, uh, the area of Exit Eighty, um, and I'll just find... Find that recommendation. I'll just read, so the, um, motion by Shanna Cox was that the city council consider a second homeless shelter overlay district in the vicinity of Exit Eighty, um, and the industrial park area, uh, in those areas currently zoned as industrial, urban enterprise, and highway business. It was seconded by Tim Glant, and it was a seven-zero vote. So that is a recommendation to you, um, you do not have to take action on that. It is certainly something that you may want to consider and could consider at a future meeting. If you did want to consider it, you could certainly direct staff to come back with a suggestion for, uh, a map area for future discussion. I don't want to, and the board certainly did not want to slow your process down, um, so I'm not proposing that you hold off, I'm moving forward, um, until a map is created, but that that would be something that could be added in the future.
Uh, just so, um, I guess I understand it, and our audience following along at home, uh, so there is not a proposed overlay or a proposed map for that, it was just a suggestion that we add land area around Exit Eighty.
That's right, and actually, they had further discussion in addition to their motion that they, um, they wanted to give flexibility to the council with determining what that area would be. So, um, they didn't get into a discussion into detail that evening as to where boundary lines might be, they, they just wanted to make that recommendation and, and leave it to council to, to discuss that and, and possibly pull something together.
If we discussed that tonight and then added that as, um, wa, an amendment, would that need to go back to the planning board for approval?
I believe so.
Yes.
I see, okay. Anything else?
Nope, those, those were the, I believe, the discussion points, um, that needed action this evening, and, and that's, uh, all of them came back from the planning board with favorable recommendation per passage.
Discussion among the council? Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if, I mean, I know, I know that this would have to go to the planning board and such, but just for something to think about, perhaps we should add some of that area where shelters are currently permitted, but which is being taken out, um, in the, it's the, the southwestern part of NCB, between the railroad tracks and the river, in the, um, sort of south of Sunnyside Park there, and, um, I mean, some of that, some of that area in urban enterprise around Central Main Medical Center, um, I think that's just something, that's a place we could look at for, in the future. You know, sort of centrally located, but, um, not in the middle of a, you know, in the middle of a neighborhood, which might concern some of the neighbors. I think that, that's just something we could take a look at sometime. Thank you.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Am I to understand from the gentleman on Ward Three that, uh, this is something that we consider in the future, not necessarily tonight? Because we've beaten this thing around, uh, the planning board has sent back a recommendation to do anything other than what they recommended, which is what we recommended in our last session, it's just gonna prolong this process, so I don't have any problem with talking about it in the future if that's the intent, but if it's not the intent, then I'm not in favor of discussing it further tonight. Let's move this along, get this thing enacted, and then we can make adjustments. It is a major hurdle we've overcome here. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and just to be, uh, absolutely clear, uh, Ms. Norton, um, so if we make any changes to the overlay tonight, we would not be able to pass it, and instead, it would have to go back to the planning board for approval?
I believe, I, that's my understanding, yes, yep.
Administrator Hunter?
Yes, because of the advertisement, if nothing else.
Right, okay. Further discussion? Counselor Scott?
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank the planning board for looking at this and having a long discussion, I heard there was quite a discussion that ensued. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it, I was at a school committee meeting that night, so, but I do appreciate the discussion that was had, and I would like to also offer my support in the third suggestion, that at some point, the planning board go and look at a possible overlay district, um, as was mentioned in their suggestion. I would like to see that happen.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council? Any thoughts, uh, from the co-chairs? At this point?
I, I would simply add that, um, the, yeah, the additional recommendation that they made, I think, is, is worth exploring.
Uh, unless there's further, or did you have something?
Just, just one other thing, similar to the buffer zone, I know we're all trying to get this passed, I just am unfamiliar enough with the process. Again, if the perfect building and the perfect people were ready to go just outside the buffer area, how would we be able to consider that?
Ms. Norton?
At this point, we wouldn't be able to, uh, but there was discussion about, perhaps, I don't know, is it would be a waiver, uh, because they would be outside of the zoning district, um, if there was a way that there could be a, a process that provides leniency to a board to consider other areas, um, I guess that, that would be an alternative method. Would be like you're, you know, if you're in the, the zoning overlay, you're allowed, and other areas could be considered, um, through a conditional use or something like that, even, you know, but it, it's not probably the best way to go about it. I think it would be really to expand the area, would be the cleanest way to do that.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you, um, thank you for that explanation. I would just add that, that shelters are a conditional use, and under the language of this ordinance, they also require a review from the city council, so they're, they're getting reviewed by the planning board, they're getting reviewed by the city council. I don't really see a reason for the overlay at all, honestly, um, because, I mean, if the, the planning board recommends the overlay, the city council adopts the overlay, and then someone comes with an application, the planning board has to review the application, the city council has to review the application. So I, I just don't really see the reason for an overlay, and why it isn't just everywhere. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor LaChapelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, this has been a very long, arduous process to get through. I want to commend the, the council, I want to commend the ad hoc committee, even though we might disagree on subjects, um, uh, you've done a fine job, and you've presented it in a very fair and balanced way, and I appreciate, um, your opinion and your output on it. We are trying, I say we, I am trying to balance the needs of the homeless people, also with the needs of the 37,000 other Lewiston residents around the city, and trying to find somewhat of a balance. The city of Lewiston should be proud of themselves for tonight, and are moving forward on this. With the shelter committee's comments, we see that Lewiston is doing far more than any other community around, in the surrounding areas. I commend the city of Lewiston, I commend the city council. Is this perfect? No. Co-chair Sotomayor said, "We're not gonna be, we're not gonna be perfect." It doesn't matter if, if it was 100% the way the shelter com- It doesn't matter if it was 100% the way the shelter committee said, it probably still wouldn't be perfect. We're doing the best we can to try to balance the needs of everybody in the city. And I think this is a decent compromise. I'm happy with the city. We, I think, are accomplishing what we said we were going to accomplish in February and moving forward. Is there going to be room to adjust and tweak in the future? Probably. But let's get something done. So with that, I am voting in favor of moving this forward the way it is right now. Let's get something on the books. Then if somebody wants to move forward on it, let them open up a shelter, and let's move. Let's just get it going. Thank you.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the gentleman on Ward 4, if you'd ask him if that's the form of a motion to move the question, I would second it.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5? Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Congratulations.
Administrator Hunter, do you have something to add?
Yes, I would just let the council know that then the moratorium would expire on October 21st.
When these two ordinances go into effect?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Sotomayor, Ms. Smith. Yeah. Thank you. Madam Clerk, agenda item number 11.
Uh, I don't ever recall.
Sorry. Sorry. Thank you.
I don't ever recall. Public hearing and final passage to amend the animal ordinance regarding the keeping of chickens on lots developed with single-family detached dwellings. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Chapter 14, Article 7, Division 4 of the Code of Ordinances receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion? Counselor LaChapelle, followed by Counselor Pease. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 13.
Agenda number 13. Public hearing and final passage to amend the Zoning and Land Use Code regarding the keeping of chickens on lots developed with single-family detached dwellings. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A, Article 11, Section 22, of the Zoning and Land Use Code of the City's Code of Ordinances receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please? Counselor LaChapelle?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Clement. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Julia Harper, if you're watching, thank you so much for your help. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 15, Madam Clerk?
14?
Or 14.
Public hearing and final passage to amend the animal ordinance regarding the keeping of bees in proximity to abutting properties. Requested action that the proposed amendments to, I'm sorry, that the proposed amendments to Chapter 14, Article 7, Division 3 of the Code of Ordinances receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion? Counselor Clement, followed by Counselor LaChapelle. Discussion? Public, or Counselor, Counselor Pease?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a comment that I think a six-foot tall barrier is not very good. Should be at least eight. If it's six-foot, the bee's going to fly in your face if you're six feet tall. This, just bring it up. That's my only comment. Thank you.
And I did have a discussion with Julia Harper about the flyaway barrier. Did you get that?
Yes.
Ms. Norton, can you please go over that? Sorry, I shouldn't have had you kick us off.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So I did receive an email from Julia Harper from the Good Food Council of Lewiston, Auburn, and she wanted to clarify what the Good Food Council's recommendation was regarding bees. So she said that in the recommendations, which is based on research that they've done, did include a minimum setback from adjacent property line of at least five feet when a flyaway barrier is required. So, the recommendation language reads, "Reduce the setback distance from the property line by requiring flyaway barriers if adjacent development is within 25 feet of the property line. Otherwise, no flyaway barrier is required." But can be five feet from the property line. So, that's the suggestion, is that with a flyaway barrier, there'd be a five-foot minimum setback.
Because otherwise, as it's written right now, the flyaway barrier could just be constructed on the property line?
On the property line. That's right. That's right.
Okay.
Yep, so it gives us a little, a little extra space there. And then I did want to point out that the language was reviewed by the planning board, and they did... Oh, I'm so sorry. That was a different agenda item. That's that. No planning board.
I think we might have passed that one already.
Yeah.
So you're saying the original... We should have a minimum setback for the flyaway barrier. Is that what you're recommending?
I have to admit that this is not a topic that I've really studied, but I know that the Good Food Council has spent quite a bit of time looking at ordinances from other cities in regards to urban agriculture. I happen to be on the Good Food Council's policy committee, so I know that they have spent quite some, quite a bit of time working on that in the last couple of years. So certainly, I think a five-foot setback seems reasonable, and that could be added if that's the pleasure of the council to do so.
Anything further on this agenda item?
No.
Discussion among the council? I guess specifically about the five-foot setback for the flyaway barrier? Counselor Clement?
I think, Mr. Mayor, this language is recommended. I recall from our discussions, it's best practices by the American beekeepers or whatever. They're just saying, I know that the, in the instance in Lewiston that brought this to our attention, they have the minimum six-foot, and they received approval by ordinance. I believe they can have an eight-foot high barrier, and they did an eight-foot high. So that's the maximum you can have. But my understanding is if you put something five feet from the property line that's six feet tall, your hive entrance is going to be a lot less than six feet. The bees will go up, and they just don't come back down. They take off and do their thing. I mean, they get up there to, I'm sure they don't go 30,000 feet, but they get up there and they hone in on their hive again, and they just have no interest in going down until they get to the area where they're feeding or whatever. So I don't see any problem with no closer than 25 feet unless they put in a flyaway. So they have to be 25 feet away, as I read this, from the property line, unless there's a flying, flyaway barrier.
Yes, correct. And just for clarification, right now, a flyaway barrier could be constructed right on the property line.
You construct a fence right on the property line. A flyaway barrier could be nothing more than a fence, and that's what it is in the case Darcy Drive, I believe it is. So you can, you can construct a fence on the property line, I believe. There's no setback for a fence, is there?
No.
So, and that's what a flyaway barrier is, is a fence. And usually, it's like something simple as a cyclone fence with the fabric coating, whatever it is that they put in or... So, and I don't see any difference there at all.
Anything further, Counselor?
No, sir. Thank you.
I would suggest to the council that we take Ms. Harper's recommendation to adopt a five-foot setback for a flyaway barrier. Counselor Clement?
Would that then be a redundancy if somebody wanted to put a fence up on the property line? They can put up to an eight-foot high fence on the property line, I believe, by ordinance, by zoning, whatever controls that. But if they want it to be a flyaway barrier, it has to be five feet back from that fence. Does not seem to make a lot of sense to me, the way it's worded, sir.
You're saying if there, or sorry, if I may?
Yeah, by all means.
You're saying there could be a fence, like, on the property line, and then five feet in be the flyaway barrier?
Yeah.
Thoughts on that, Ms. Norton?
Sorry, I was just reading this to clarify for myself what it currently says. So it looks like it reads to me that you have to be at least 25 feet away unless you install a fence while vegetation that's at least six feet tall that forces them to fly upwards. So is the discussion to require that barrier to be five feet from the property line? I think that's the discussion, is whether it can be right on the property line or has to be five feet. So you either have to be 25 feet away, or you can be right on the property line if you have this barrier.
Right. And if I'm understanding Counselor Clement correctly, if the property owner already has a fence, that wouldn't be able to count as a flyaway barrier? In essence, they would need to construct a second fence. Is that the concern?
No, sir. I don't believe that's the case at all. I believe if they have a fence and it's six feet high and it's solid, then it meets the requirement.
Right.
Yep. That's how I read it. So sorry, were you asking me a question?
Well, I, perhaps I misunderstood Counselor Clement.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm okay for now. Further discussion? Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yeah.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Now I think we're up to item number 15.
Item number 15. Public hearing and final passage regarding amendments to the elections ordinance for the redistricting of city ward boundary lines. Requested action that the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 32 Elections, Section 32-1 Wards Described, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please? Counselor Harriman, followed by?
I'll second.
Counselor Clement. Discussion? Thank you for printing out the maps and making those available to us. Madam Clerk. Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council? Discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Begrudgingly, I vote yes.
Ward 5?
No.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 6 to 1.
Agenda item number 16, please.
Item number 16. Order authorizing the transfer of $249,085 from CSO Storage to Lopka to CSO Separation Various Areas. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the transfer of $249,085 from CSO Storage at Lopka to CSO Separation Various Areas.
May I have a motion, please? Counselor Clement, followed by Counselor LaChapelle. And we have Engineer Bulleye here.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you, anything you'd like to start us off with?
Sure. Just a quick description, background. So this money was requested back in FY '21 for, to begin design of a CSO combined sewer overflow tank at Lopka, the wastewater treatment plant. Shortly after that, we received the ARPA Funding Council dedicated nine and a half, about nine and a half million dollars towards this project. So that money was used towards the design work, which has been progressing. So this funding isn't really needed. It could be added into the construction in a couple of years, but I think it's recommended that we use it for a separation project sooner than later. We're going to be paving Weber Avenue next year, and this is a good opportunity to use this funding towards separating that sewer line, adding a separate drain line as part of that project while it's being paved. So that's the recommendation.
Thank you. Discussion? Public comment? And back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you, Jeff. Agenda item number 17.
Item number 17. Resolve in support of the City of Lewiston election officials, workers, and volunteers. Requested action to approve the resolve in support of the City of Lewiston election officials, workers, and volunteers.
May I have a motion, please? Counselor Scott?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pease.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Discussion?
I ask leave to amend the main motion by deleting the third paragraph in its entirety if the councilor of Ward 1 and Ward 5 will accept this as a friendly amendment.
Thoughts? Yes. Counselor Scott?
Thank you. So first off, I would just like to express why I put this forward. I thought it was very important that we recognize as a council the good work, not only by our city clerks' staff, but also by all the volunteers, the election workers, even our public works department who handle our machines. They do a phenomenal job. And I wanted to bring this up because I've done the job myself. I worked as an early voting clerk here a few times. I've been a ward clerk. I've worked as a volunteer. I have been a poll watcher for the Republican Party. I was Counselor Jolinas's proxy in a recount vote. And I have worked on not only my own campaigns, but, well, far too many campaigns to count at this point in my life. And so I have full faith, trust, and really want to give support for the workers in our community that do this work. They have integrity. They put themselves forward to volunteer. They do it because they believe in the civic duty, and they believe in the elections in our community. And I think it's really important for us to support them. Now that being said, in respect to a friendly amendment, though I am reluctant to do it, in the spirit of what we are going through and everything that we are working through, I feel that it is far more important that we, as a body, fully support this as a unit and a group, to support our election workers. And in the spirit of that, I will accept a friendly amendment to remove the third paragraph.
So Counselor, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. So the motion is now the resolve minus the third paragraph? Is that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Jolinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Counselor Scott, for bringing this forward. Certainly can't weigh in on the, I mean, the friendly amendment's been made, but I mean, I think the reason for this resolve is stated. That being said, you know, I really appreciate, you know, that you're doing this. I understand why you're doing this. Removing the paragraph isn't going to change that, so thank you for that.
And I just wanted to add, you know, thank you for everything you've done for us, Madam Clerk. I believe I recognized you on June 7th. And, yeah, when I first worked office, you know, all of the awards and designations you have, I was like, "We have a famous clerk here in Lewiston." So thank you very much for your service to our city. Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. I also wanted to thank Counselor Scott for bringing this forward. As it, I mean, as it says in the second paragraph, "Free and fair elections are necessary to ensure popular support and legitimacy for those who make governmental decisions." And, you know, our elections are just so important in our, in our democracy. I've also worked only one election as a, as a volunteer processing absentee ballots. And I didn't have any question beforehand as to the integrity of the system and the people who maintain it, but I certainly didn't have any question afterward, seeing all of the checks and balances and processes that are, that are very, very closely followed. So I am, I am glad to, to support this, and I... So I am, I am glad to, to support this, and I thank you again for bringing it forward.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to personally thank the lady from Ward One for accepting the amendment. I understand that she went through an awful lot in bringing this forward. We had conversations on this. Several of us have had conversations over the last few days. It was never our intent to disparage the city clerk, the deputy city clerk, or any of the election workers. They do an excellent job. In fact, I would hazard a guess that there's nobody in the state of Maine that has a better city clerk than the City of Lewiston. And she runs a pretty tight ship. I just think that by way of explanation, I would hate to see this council enter into partisan politics, and I'll just leave it at that. I think that's what we do here tonight. We award the people who make our election system what it is, congratulate them on doing a great job, and if we didn't believe that, I'm sure we'd be looking for ways to improve it, but I just don't think that we have to worry about that. Thank you.
Did you have anything, Counselor Scott?
Yes, um, just one more thing. May I remind everybody that's running for office this fall? Be careful what you say. And I'll leave it at that.
Uh, I appreciate what you said, Counselor Jolinas. Um, you know, things don't happen in a vacuum, and yeah, we all know the reason why this council resolve is here. Public comment on this agenda item and back to the council? Madam? Oh, sorry. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And now we are up to reports and updates from the council. Counselor, Counselor Pease?
Just to let you know that tomorrow night's our first, uh, under County Budget Committee meeting. We picked up the fold as I picked up yesterday. Kind of anxious, but it's like there's a lot to it. Thank you, that's it.
Uh, and just for clarification, you're serving on the Budget Committee, correct, along with Counselor Harriman?
Counselor Clement.
And Counselor Clement. There you go. Uh, I trust that you three will represent us well. Further?
At least three of our county property tax will be appropriate anyway. Just joking, just joking.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. Um, just a couple of reports. So the school committee met on September twelfth. It was actually quite a short meeting. I was surprised. I wasn't used to such a short meeting, especially with this council lately. I'm just joking. We did some, we had an update on transportation. The school department is still looking at trying to get more bus drivers. We're still short on bus drivers, and the um, school committee had several suggestions to the superintendent to reach out to other sources in our community to see if we can get more C D L drivers available for our buses, but we also?
Sorry, just a clarif- question, a clarifying question if I may. So you do need a C D L to be a bus driver?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you do. And um, I even made the suggestion, though I will put it out there, that we also need some of the bus drivers, and I thought about our conversation earlier in the year with United Ambulance, and that they said that they weren't using all of their drivers as much with some of their services because of the COVID, and I thought, well, reach out to them. Maybe they can drive at least some of the vans instead of the buses, because that's not the same licensing requirement. Basically, what we were doing is trying to get the superintendent to look outside the box, see what we can do, but we also charged him to have that conversation with Hudson Bus to look at what our contract is and how we can work on this to try to find the appropriate bus drivers for all of our students. We also approved a couple of field trips. We had a, which is actually, to be honest with you, very exciting, because over the last couple of years, there have been hardly any field trips at all because of COVID and the restrictions. And so they're coming back full force, and we're getting several requests at each meeting, which is a great thing, because it's good for the kids to get out there and experience other things outside of the classroom. We also had a conversation and voted on to approve a pay rate for substitute teachers. We did that after the final contract was approved by the Ed Tex. They approved their contract, and the school committee voted to that contract agreement last week as well. And then um, that was about it. It was a very short meeting. I will say that on that particular note, I'd like to give a reminder that next week is Homecoming Week for Lewiston. It was brought back with enthusiasm by students who worked very hard to bring this back, and there are all sorts of activities that you can see that are happening all week for Homecoming Week. And they're on the Lewiston Schools Department website, and there's also going to be an alumni dinner on Friday, September twenty-third for all Lewiston High School alumni. And Mr. Mayor, if I may report on one more committee, please.
Please continue, Counselor.
So last week, the Senior Advisory Council met for the first time, and I'm happy to say that it was a great meeting. We chose our officers, and I was hoping that she would still be here, but they're not, but Mr. Glant, who got the Lewiston leads tonight, his wife Donna Glant will be the new chair of the Senior Advisory Council. And um, right at this point, we had, most of our discussion was trying to figure out what services are available already in the community. What's senior plus doing? What do seniors, what are they looking for? Having that conversation with those that are at using the armory already for the services that are there, having conversations with um, what's happening inside Lake Oak Park and some of our other senior centers, and figuring out where we want to pull that conversation and to build it further. So that's where we're at, but I'm excited to say that it was an excellent conversation, and everybody was really excited to get going and have this happen. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Jolinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report out that the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee hosted the Second Annual Rally for Recovery, and I want to say thank you to the City of Lewiston for supporting this event. We had almost five hundred people that came. It was really successful. We had a great lineup of speakers. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, personally, and you, Counselor Harriman, for showing up, and that meant a lot to a lot of the people that were there. And I, I'm just really pleased that we had such a great turnout, and I'm really looking forward to holding our Third Annual Rally for Recovery next year. So, that's good.
I, yeah, it was, it was a busy weekend. There was a lot of great events. Um, we had the farmer's market, a special shout out to Maya, who handed out frisbees as the mayor's special assistant. I gave her the frisbee. She rounded around to all the kids and handed out frisbees to all the kids there. Yeah, that was a great event. Uh, and a huge shout out to L A Arts, who put on the beautiful Blackbird Festival. A little bit of rain, but other than that, it was, it was a really great event. Thank you. Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. Uh, I've just got a few things. So Housing Committee at our recent meeting, we just, we had a nice discussion with Director Hediger from Planning and Code about several different things, including the, the changes that will need to happen by next summer due to L D two thousand and three passed by the state legislature. The Transit Committee, we met a couple weeks ago, approved the purchase of two new buses in two thousand and twenty-three. Just regular fleet replacement for buses that are aging out of service. We're also back to full schedule on all the routes. As of September sixth, there was a bus that was out of service waiting for a part that limited the, limited some of the routes there. And um, we also got an update on the ridership on the, uh, there's a pilot extension of the Sabata Street route that goes out to, instead of stopping at, uh, I believe it's at Pond Road, it goes out to Country Lane Estates and Fox Run Drive. And there's been several dozen people already using, using the bus at those stops in the past couple of weeks. And Counselor Jolinas already mentioned it, but I just wanted to thank her and the, the Public Health Committee for putting on the Rally for Recovery. Uh, I wasn't able to go last year, so this year was my first time, and I, I really liked it. Had a lot of great conversations with people and, and really learned a lot. So, uh, thank you. And my last thing is, as our clerk reminded us in our emails, today is National Voter Registration Day. So anyone who's watching, who is not registered to vote, or has moved and hasn't, hasn't updated their registration, that can be done anytime, up to and including Election Day, but it may save some time potentially if you get it done early. So, thank you.
Further, Counselor Pease?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as bus drivers are concerned, I think the governor ought to step into that. If the whole state has this problem, and I don't see why she couldn't get in the national guard to drive buses. The, a lot of them, most of them have C D L licenses, and they could bring that up. Thank you.
Have a guard license to drive a bus, and they're?
Do you mind speaking to the mic, Counselor?
If they have a guard or a military license, giving them authorization to operate a bus, and they're activated, you can bypass, I would believe, the state requirements. Something to think about.
I'll bring it up.
Further, uh, reports and updates? And any new business? Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask if maybe we could have a discussion sometime about city committees meeting, uh, having hybrid meetings. So I'm on the Transit Committee, which I just mentioned, which is, uh, it's a joint committee, and we have hybrid meetings. They have been for several months now. Uh, and it's really helpful, especially for people, if the meeting takes place during the day especially. You know, people can just, they can be at work. They can go to the meeting virtually, and then they don't have to spend the travel time as well. And it's also, for some committees, especially the smaller ones, or if they've got a vacancy or two, it can be hard to meet quorum sometimes because people can't make it, and then that meeting basically, you know, we can discuss things, but we can't take any action. So it would be nice to have that option to, to have hybrid meetings. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I do, you know, I think councils should meet in person, but having said that, some of the other committees could certainly have the opportunity to meet either hybrid or remotely, and I, I think that would be advantageous. I don't know if we need to have a full discussion right now, but perhaps, uh, I guess, figure out what the limitations are, uh, and then maybe, yeah, add it to a future meeting. Counselor Clement?
Mr. Mayor, if I recall correctly, the last body, we discussed this, and the policy is that there'll be no hybrid meetings. So we would, we would need to do something to change that. I mean, I don't want to be a stick in the mud. I don't have any problem with that, but hybrid, but that was, uh, that was clearly unanimous consent that there'd be no more. We're just coming off this year on mute and all that good stuff, but uh, I think people were tired of, of virtual meetings at the time, but there was, I believe it was a policy that was passed?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Counselor Harriman?
Yes, and, and just to clarify, I'm, I'm speaking only of committees, not, um, not city council.
Well, this applied to anything involving, because we talked about it on the Finance Committee, and no, can't do it. Policy won't allow it, so.
We can bring that back before the council and talk about options.
Thank you. Uh, and then one thing I wanted to not hush out tonight, but just kind of bring up, so you know, I've talked to several people now about how city hours are kind of not conducive to people who may work away and need to come back to either register a vehicle or anything like that, and so I understand expanding or shifting city hours is, you know, difficult and problematic, but how have we spent, uh, or you know, for instance, registering a vehicle, I, I think that was a specific example given to me. So if you register a vehicle, you have to do it in person?
First time.
Or Administrator Hunter?
If it's the first time you're registering it, or if it's a private sale.
Okay, and then what is, I guess, what is the, uh, the requirement to doing it in person, or the need to do it in person?
It's mainly looking at the documents and getting the copies of the documents to submit to the state.
Okay.
And paying the sales tax.
Right, okay. Counselor LaChapelle?
Thank you. Are we gonna have a follow-up meeting on parks by any chance? I asked for dollar amounts, and I feel like we've still left hanging on what's happening with the Cody Street Park and that whole surrounding. I don't think we've come to closure on it. Are we gonna get information shortly?
We can bring that back to the council for a project to reevaluate, if that's a decision from the council.
Well, I, I requested that we know dollar figures.
I believe that was provided in the workshop?
No, it was not.
Okay.
Not the cost of the, of the parks. She didn't have that information for us. And I, I still have concern on the Cody Street Park and the expenses that we're going through, and what is it going to take for us to replace what we lost? And I have some concern on it, and I want to address the neighbors' concerns in that area.
Okay, then I would recommend putting that as an agenda item. That way, if action is needed, you have that available to you at that night.
Thank you.
You know, I, I realize that, um, uh, you know, city staff does not have an enormous amount of free time, but I, you know, in order, you know, to you know, uh, make city government work for people, I, I guess I would like, uh, to take a look at what is required to, to come to City Hall for, and figure out ways to, to either, um, handle that in another fashion, or ways to make it easier to do business here at the city. We have a remote deposit now, um, uh, mobile remote deposit and banks, and so, um, I realize it's not quite the same thing. But yeah, I would like to take a look at, um, you know, how can we, you know, increase access to city services beyond, um, you know, normal city hours? Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just bring it to the mayor's attention. I'm not trying to downgrade your thought. Uh, I think it's wonderful if we could do that, but I think in just about every instance, we're talking about having to negotiate a change. City workers changing their schedule and stuff like that, so it's, it's not. It's a great idea, and I, I think there are a lot of people that would prefer to be able to do it. You can do so many things remotely now that, other than registration the first time, you pay your sales, your excise tax, you can do it online with the state. You know, I don't think, the motor vehicle, I don't think, I think they close earlier than we do perhaps over on the fairgrounds, and maybe it's four o'clock, I'm not sure.
I think it's the same hours that we are doing.
I agree in concept, but it's not something that's going to be done easily. I think that this has been discussed before. I think we discussed it last term and found out that there's a lot of negotiated items that would have to be taken up in order to do something like that. Just, just food for thought. That's all I'm bringing that up for. It's something that I think we can discuss, but perhaps staff can advise us just what sort of difficulties have occurred in the past when this has been tried, and what the result has been. I think if it were easy, it would have been done already. That may be why we don't have the changes. Not to say that we can't look at it, but uh, there are some problems that have to be overcome.
Yeah, point well taken, Counselor Clement. Uh, you know, and just for clarification purposes, the goal is not to, you know, stay late. The goal is to, you know, in this case, like, get a vehicle registered, and so if there, if there are, I guess, are needless barriers to doing that, um, then yeah, I would like to, to take a look at that. Any further, Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. I would just add, um, so the mayor and I were, um, the, this gentleman, one gentleman in particular, the mayor and I were both talking to him, and um, it was kind of humorous that he, he bought this pickup. He hasn't been able to come in to register it because he works during the times the city hall is open. And so he, he let us know that, you know, if he leaves it for another four months or so, he doesn't have to pay us the excise tax for this year, because he'll be registering it in the next year. So I, I don't know how many situations like that are out there, but we may be, you know, losing out on some revenue due to people not being able to. due to people not being able to do this business. Thank you.
Further new business? Madam Clerk, are, I believe we're heading into executive session again?
You are, yes. Item number twenty, executive session to discuss real estate negotiations of which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city. Requested action to enter into an executive session pursuant to main revised statutes annotated Title One, Section four oh five six C, to discuss real estate negotiations of which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city.
May I have a motion, please? Counselor Pease, followed by Counselor Clement?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Brief recess?
Good evening, Lewiston, or good night, Lewiston.
Yes.